Uh we'll get started at six oh three tonight and as we do, uh we'll open it up for the public comment first. Uh if there's any or if there are any members from the public, anybody online, Steve?
Yeah, let's see.
Nope. Okay, so nobody online, we'll skip that part of the uh the disclaimer for now, but if any of members of public in many of members of the public in person would like to speak, you can raise your hand and come to the microphone. Okay, so perfect, we will uh get started tonight. It's a very informal meeting in terms of an agenda. It's a it's a budget workshop, so it's a chance for us to um really dive only into the budget, focus only on the budget compared to the other items that we have in our regular meetings, which we will have a week from Thursday. It'll be December fifteenth when we have our next Amherst School Board Regular Business Meeting, which will naturally include some budget items as well. Uh but tonight we'll just focus strictly on the budget. And of course, here we go. So as uh not a lot of changes from our second draft that we had from draft one to draft two, but I will open it up uh first off to our superintendent, Steve Chamberlain, to see if there are any high level things that he wants to talk about, any items that he would like us to bring up before we dive into conversation.
Sure, I know, I appreciate the opportunity and thanks to everyone. So it's an it's an interesting budget year. We have first year principal at Clark Wilkins and a first year principal at Amherst Middle School. Um so uh both are gonna, even though Kathleen has been there for a while, um it's still really the first time she's looked at at that from that lens. And Kristen has just been here for a few months. So part of this is trying to give them the opportunity to try to listen, learn and go through a budget cycle. Um and one of the Ways and Means Committee is one of one of the Ways and Means um members said there wasn't much in this budget. Um and um you know, on my drive over, I was like, there is um there's some nice progress. It's tempered. There's no questions tempered and we can take a look at um you know, the impact of a large facility project, uh you know, is that appropriate to temper or is it full? So but for example, at um Clark Wilkins, uh one of the innovations in this budget is contracted services with St. Ace to bring in two certified teachers to work um as as special ed- education teachers in training to provide, I expect twenty-six hundred hours of services to our um youngsters, um either in discussion or direct services. Uh as we build our pipeline to, as you look, I happened to look this weekend, there's an extraordinary number, extraordinary number of special educators openings right now. So working with St. Ace, we to expand our relationship, we have interns now in the undergraduate world. This is more in the graduate world. And to provide about twenty-six hundred hours of services for fifty thousand dollars a year um is is uh we're very much looking forward to that. And as soon as the budget is passed, we engage St. Ace. They have people in waiting, hoping it passes that will fill these positions. Um so that is a significant amount of services for great um value. Another item at Clark Wilkins, I'm really excited about, and it came up late in the in the subcommittee meetings, is the board's support and the Ways and Means Committee's enthusiastic support for the library assistant. It's dependent, but we've been out a library without a library assistant at Clark Wilkins for three plus years, allowing that the then the libraries only open when the librarian and library media specialist is not servicing and and it's and it is a special there. So she's out of that space often. So we will have increased by again about thirteen hundred hours, because that's about the hours of the school day during the year, access to books on call. So a second grade teacher can say, oh, let's go see if we can find a book and go down and utilize the services. And books in hand as much as possible, um I think it's elementary school is a great plus. So those financial aren't big hits and they may not be star studded, but those kind of supports at Clark Wilkins, Kathleen's excited, Christine's excited, and I'm excited about those innovations. It also adds a classroom teacher directly impacted by our growth and class size, which is very, very important to stay within the minimums that the board is op uh you know, uh supported for last few years. Sliding up to uh Amherst Middle School. Um there, we are doing some staff taking advantage of some natural attrition and reallocating services again into direct services for students in the literacy world. It's either going to be a reading specialist or a special education in the reading literacy world, depending on how Kristen, again, we want to honor her and give her time, but the additional resource is pretty close to budget neutral as we reallocate support personnel for direct instruction. Um and we think that is a a strong innovation and a strong use of funds. Um because one of the one of the data pieces that we're tracking is our literacy data, K K eight. Um because I really believe if we can increase our number of students on grade level, um the whole world gets better. Um the other, another piece that I'm excited about, again, it's not star studded, it's not, but um we are establishing a transition through our interest classic athletic department, through outsourcing our co-curricular leadership to the high school. Which is a model that's used at multiple high schools in New Hampshire and that transition, both philosophical and it'd be stronger connections with our high school programs and our middle school programs, middle school programs and high school programs. Again, not significant change in funding, but significant change in professional services. We appreciate our support staff member who led that department, but now we are getting very experienced athletic staff intimately um with our, we'll link philosophy um at the middle school level and our great expertise at the high school level. So um those changes at the elementary school and Clark Wilkins, sorry, Clark Wilkins and Amherst Middle School are really strong. Um the last piece of the open question that Amy and I have been talking about, I talked with Brian Miller, talking with Christine, talking with Kristen, actually had a chance to talk to some teachers is the open question about devices. Um you know, originally, it's it's been well documented for the number of years and I I uh with trying to keep, you know, trying to do our best to keep our budget within a manageable level. One of the reasons is because there's more pressure for me or sense of urgency and Amy and I talk about this a lot, to pass this budget. Um six second, I don't know if you caught my little video, but on on consecutive years of defaults in this inflationary environment is going to be very, very significant. And what Amy and Katie gave me a little primer on the impact of a default and the magic words were, Steve, we will operate under the last approved budget, but the last approved budget is FY twenty-two. If we and we have somewhere between four and seven percent inflation, I broke, I've written some stuff for the SAU board about the price of nuggets. You know, chicken nuggets and pizza as well as fuel, as well as, and so my when Amy and Katie said that if 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 we go into consecutive defaults, FY twenty-four, we will be operating with a budget that is last approved, which is FY twenty-two. And we, last year was good for me to watch this process. We met and we had to readjust to put money like for transportation. Well, that amount was FY twenty-three to FY twenty-two money, that's okay. Now we're going to have to go from FY, right, twenty-four expense to FY twenty-two funding level in transportation, in food service, in supplies. So even without the facility project, we would have tempered this budget because I have a strong sense of urgency about not going into successive defaults. So with that, in full transparency with that lens, we talked about not putting forward a one-on-one to seventy thousand, right, Amy, something pretty close to a seventy thousand ish amount. Um trying to really trying to get it down to a level, I'll be honest, we're trying to get under four percent. I I I am also worried that I don't have the opportunity to talk to five hundred people in the room that are going to vote on the budget that day, you know, based on last year's deliberative. So you know, a lot of people are just going to see the number, I think, because they're not going to attend and understand on packing, and that may be accurate enough, but that's a concern. So the optics and the actual number is of import. But with the discussion with ways and means, and to be honest, with their I don't know if exasperation is the right word, but their astonishment or their initiative or their energy around it, so that's just a relook at the one-on-one device. We brought it for our last board meeting. Um and had I thought it was a very good discussion. And I also have taken a look at research and evidence based on how he's worked about one-to-one versus two-to-one. So I had a chance to sit with Kristen and I'll be fully transparent, anything that I can do to promote planning and collaboration of teachers, I'm in. And to be honest with you, sometimes when you only have half the number, teachers have to plan more than the full number. And I'm a little, and I don't know who's going to watch this, but anything I can do to encourage planning, I'm in on that. I think planning is a key to meeting needs of all kids. So um two-to-one, uh having influx of about eighty machines, ten in all eight core sections, a brand new fully charged, charge-last-all-day devices, which is an upgrade. Um I think we have the flexibility that we can do two-on-one in class, if we wanted a whole class, ten and two activities. Or with your humanities partner, we could go twenty and have one-on-one single devices. Um Kristen and I liked it, um Christine and I liked it, uh Amy, Brian and I liked it. In full transparency, I had a chance this week, last week, to be at a math department meeting. And one of the math teachers who I respect and believe is absolutely quality talked about the difference of not having one-on-one in one of the areas that we were talking about in math. And that's goal setting through empower. So in the old, in past, when they were one-on-one, they could do goal setting with empower. And I turned to the math teacher, said, you still can, ten kids do it this and you have alternate and you just swap activities. And sometimes when you're so used to having twenty, you think that's the only way? As opposed to having ten and not. And Kristen had, went to Kristen, I said, are we sure this is okay? Cause I don't, you know, I want to make sure what we do is value. Kristen had a chance to unpack this more with it with the department and felt that they did understand that planning and small groups and stations and doing this with with the influx of brand-new, fully charged machines would be a great pilot next year where we are in fifth grade, but want to put two-on-one. So the recommendation coming forward to be honest with, if we can still get that number under a place where optically it is, because I'm going to go back to before, I apologize for this long uh seats, but I want to get it to a number that we feel very confident is going to pass, because I don't want to work through FY twenty-four numbers in this inflationary environment with FY twenty-two values. That, because that's going to have more of an impact than eighty machines. Yeah, does that make sense? So that's to me is the highlights of the FY twenty-four Amherst School District Budget from the Clark Wilkins through the innovations through this and the impact of default. Is that all right?
Okay. I will open it up for questions. And Terry and Josh, you you got here after Steve had started, but maybe we'll start off with the technology piece, because that was the out of the variance between budget one and budget two drafts, that was the biggest, uh biggest variance in there. So uh Terry, I will let you, when you get the mic turned on, there should be a small tab on the bottom, I believe it is. There's also that one next to you, if it.
I feel like I'm like, you know, doing stand. Hey, uh so sorry, I muscle memory went to brick school and they were all heading out and I said, where are you going, Josh? And he said, yeah, I'm going to the meeting at the high school. I said, oh, well, I guess I better go there too. So so sorry. I was on time and everything, y'all. I was so proud.
Okay, glad you're here.
Um anyway, so I appreciate you looking at it in a holistic way and seeing if there's something, somewhere where we can meet in the middle. So thank you for all the work that's gone into that. I agree with you that getting a budget is more important than any one thing in it. Um I would still be open to even on a two-to-one separating it out if we need it to. And so if we felt like that's what we needed, that we we could make a case for it, we could explain it. We could say, hey, we're going to try it this way one year. And then if we really feel like, no, it was too much work, too much hassle, and we want to go to a one-to-one, at least we'll have that many more good devices in the building. And then we can hopefully, if we've had a year with a full budget, it'll be more palatable and and we could look at at truly doing the one-to-one like we always wanted to to mimic the high school program. So I think um I'm totally for trying a year with somewhere in between. Compromise is a good thing. It's not a weakness. And and if we need to to get the overall number right, I I do still think that that separate is totally fine with me.
See, my concern with separate is that it's another thing for people to vote on. Uh and I think we're going to see a lot of things on this ballot already. So I presume you mean a separate article, correct?
If we had to, I mean, if we had to to get the overall number where we need it.
Yeah, I think let's let's use that as a, in my opinion, that's a last ditch resort, because if we're going to reduce that number from roughly seventy thousand to roughly in half at thirty-five thousand or whatever, if we're going to go to the two-to-the-one, two-to-one, it's going to upgrade the upgrade the devices that we have currently, which is a good thing. It'll ease some of the burden on six, seven and eight, where they are doing more of that one-to-one program. Um but I would, I would want to make that part of the budget. I just think having another item on that ballot is is a lot for people to read through and a lot to digest and um a lot, yeah, a lot more to add up when you're looking at the overall budget, then you start saying, well, I have to add another thing into the overall cost, because don't forget hopefully, we're going to have contracts with AEA and ASSA on there as well. And those are numbers that are not going to be factored into this, I the the overall line item that we see.
So um when it's in, it's three point nine, or it's, you know, it's four point, sorry, it's four point oh even. And if we yanked it, it would go down to three point nine. But what uh Amy just said, and I agree, there's the another option is talking about this is a priority with end-of-year projects into your fund balance. Um it's it's um thirty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand dollars, more probable than not, the board will become, would we come to this board for end-of-year projects? Um you know, to to work on through fund balancing. So we could say it's a priority for end-of-year fund balance and do it that way. So you have a separate warrant you have in the budget or at the end of your projects under reserve fund balance.
Yeah, uh again, I I go back to uh prioritizing items and end-of-year fund balance is typically where we reserve it for um unassigned fund balance will go towards our CRF for the facilities. We have some big numbers coming up for that. So even though it may only be thirty-five or forty or forty-five thousand, that is still going to be, you know, potentially upwards of seven, eight percent of that CRF allocation that we're looking to add on to.
You are right on, and it does put pressure on the fund balance. And um there is pressure on fund balance, because we haven't even.
In a in a default budget, no less.
Yep.
So it looks like it's a tenth of a percent.
What do we have right now for devices in that grade? Like, are we talking about taking some devices out of service?
So um the plan, what by in by infusing by infusing uh eighty new devices, the there'd be a culling and there'd be an improvement quality for six, seven, eight. So the very best devices that are in fifth grade would go and we would, we would triage them, but as we've um had some attrition of devices and we've got some limping up devices. So um an influx of eighty would impact the entire school's ability to have quality, to higher quality devices in the program. It really would be a nice influx. You know, does that make sense?
Anybody else with thoughts on that? Any ideas, any recommendations?
So I tend to lean on the if we value it, if we think it's important, it should go in the budget, um because of the things that Tom is talking about. We know our unassigned fund balance is always going to be pulled in different directions. And so I do hesitate to shift stuff that we believe is important, that we're hearing is is important from our Ways and Means Committee. Um and I think, I think we've, we're trying to strike a good balance with um you know, by not just making this, making sure we're doing what we need and not what we want. Um so I I would support keeping the two-to-one option in the budget and explaining that to the public, you know, why we did it that way.
I think it's a nice leverage, the entire one device program, because the influx would not have an insignificant, Brian, when I talked to him, did not have, would not have an insignificant impact on six, seven, eight. Because the very best of the devices would be spread, would repurpose other places.
I believe Sohegan has set up a um, I don't know if it's a CRF or it's a long-term funds program for technology. Is this something that I don't think it's appropriate for this year, but maybe that's something we can make a a marker to look at for next year? Um knowing we have facility issues, but I think that it may be beneficial to have that. So we're constantly, and it's not just for devices, but it's for servers, it's for software, whatever else we may need that we know are going to need to be upgraded. I think the more of these funds that we can have, the better off long-term we might end up being.
Yeah, yeah, that's a new fund we're setting up for them this year.
Okay.
And um I would say by the fall, we will have a um purchase plan, um a high, you know, high value CIP, CNA plan. Uh we call it Roger Light in the Technology Department, where Brian will be looking at our switches, looking at our access points, looking at our servers and and forecasting, because what we know in Sohegan, we have seventy-five thousand dollars of of switches in Sohegan, then three years we're replacing, so we're dropping twenty-five a year um to to gradually do it as opposed to a big hit. And we'll be doing that, we'll be looking at that same um process once Brian develops the long-term purchase plan. But it really is the big stuff, access points, switches and servers. Um that's the big hit stuff. And some of the servers are actually shared now with the SAU and everybody, it's a piece. Um but some of the switches are still pretty pricey. Um but we're pretty comfortable where we are, but you're right. Um next year, we'll be looking at a way to even out those purchases over time through a savings program.
Okay. Other thoughts, folks have, Terry?
All right. So I know you started talking with them. Would there be some PD put into how to effectively use a two-to-one?
Yes, and um I think we talked about, I talked about with Kristen and Christine. Um philosophically, I uh same thing for kids, same thing for adults, voice and choice. Um so um we are looking at um strands of of technology integration, having a strand of PD next year. Uh and also um trying to look at, we are actually, um we have an accepted retirement of someone in the Technology Department. And perhaps when we 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 will look to hire that replacement person, we will look at someone who has integration experience, not just teaching experience. Um so it's Sue Nettelman is, you know, is retiring this year and she's in the tech world. Um so that position, we'll look at integration position.
Nice, thanks.
So that's our approach, strands as well as uh increase our capacity within our staff and hiring.
Okay.
You can come up. I mean, it's not a big, you can do whatever you'd like.
So even if you're trying to hide, you now just completely called the awkward. Now you might as well take the walk.
So far, for for sneaking, eh? Always in a good way.
Any other thoughts on the technology piece? Again, I don't know, I don't know that we're in the needed position to vote tonight unless Amy or Steve would like us to cast a vote tonight. I think it's more of if we can get the budget under four and you're able to keep that in there, then I think that's the win. But if not, we can make that decision when we meet next Thursday for our regular meeting.
Yeah, it's four right now with the two-to-one. Um but for your draft three, we'll, we're going to scour again and see what we can find and maybe there's some small adjustments that can be made. Um I I know we'd all like to have it under four percent.
How are we, so how are we budgeting for um, it's totally throwing, changing subjects for the transportation increase that we have and you know, the consistently high fuel costs that we have right now?
Yeah, we did add some funding for um for fuel.
On top of what we did for an increase this year, correct? I think we added an extra five percent to the overage for this year.
I have, I have my phone a friend here.
So.
Katie, can you check on that?
But I still think we went back to default, though, and added, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah.
We did add it in. Yeah, so we budgeted for um what's in the contract, that increase and um additional fuel and Katie can grab the number for us.
Okay. Um so the question is, is should a how difficult does a task become? What kind of contingencies do we have in a default to, you know, to make up those increases for fuel and for transportation next year?
We go to default again?
Yeah. Because those don't go away. So it's, that's my, that's a big concern.
We had, we were fortunate to have some savings in um in healthcare. So we were able to apply that. That's how we were, that's really how we were able to change from the um the voted default to the recommended default. So if you remember all the moving around, um that was due to those savings.
That and and we hired well.
We did. Yep, we always try to do that. So that's.
Sure.
Prevented a draconian impact of a single default. Uh but with another default again, locked in FY twenty-two and FY twenty-four fuel costs is FY twenty-four nugget costs. That we will have to look very hard about staffing. Because I don't know, I mean, obviously, the GMR this year is four point one. So there's not, the GMR was twelve point one, it would have hurt our budget. But there would have been an opportunity to go, you know, go significantly down with a four point one. I don't know how much we're going to, you know, have that same savings, because it's, it's a lower piece. And it's the way the GMR works, it's it's rotating six-month terms. So when they set the GMR at six months and then they replace one six months with a new six month, that's how you get to the actual. But capped it at four point one, it won't go above that. Um so it all depends on how we do on that swap of the six-month entry. So I'm, I I am worried that it's an extraordinary, it's the highest in my time as a district leader, it's the highest inflation. The costs are higher than ever and will be locked into the two-year-old budget. I'm not trying to, the sky is falling. And I'm not, this is not, this is a concern. I'll just be completely honest, the consecutive, I did ask Katie, um how many times we've had consecutive defaults? It's, I think, only at and Christine, only at Mount Vernon years ago, I in now, in in the Concord area, there was a school district that had multiple years of default and there was a significant change in staff, leadership as well.
So my my question, you mentioned that if if it's in a default, and I don't want to harp on the negative here, I'd rather focus on the items that we need to um use to, I don't, for lack of a better term, sell the budget to make sure, you know, we're justifying voting for it. You mentioned last week or last Wednesday in your video that we're going back to the last voted on budget. But that's not exactly the case, because the devote, the the default budget from FY, the default budget we're working on now had a percentage increase or had it had an increase from the budget, budget that was voted on and passed for FY twenty-two. So those numbers aren't the same number. The FY twenty-two budget that was voted on is not the same budget that we're operating on this year. So why would we go back to the FY twenty-two budget when our default is a different number than what we're operating on now?
It's the, what we have to go by is what was the voted default.
So last year's, the the one that we're operating on now is the last voted budget.
Value.
Yep.
The board will always have the opportunity to transfer. But the value, the the pot, if you will, is the FY twenty-two pot.
We're still, we're not operating in the FY twenty-two pot right now. We're operating on
Adjusted FY twenty-two.
Oh, so with the mandatory legal requirement. So it's still FY twenty-three. It's still the FY twenty-three amount, but it's based off of the overall.
We will not be spending more this year than the FY twenty-two default, but we are spending some areas higher, transportation.
Okay.
Some areas lower, GMR.
Right.
You with me?
I think so.
The language is last approved budget, last approved budget, but you can move, that's the pot. And the board has the full authority to move around different vegetables in the pot.
Yeah.
But you can't make a new pot.
So we, we did add significant funds for fuel. It was sixteen thousand five eighty in metal and thirty-one thousand two hundred for elementary.
And that was only heating fuel. That was not tran- or is that transportation? That's transportation.
Yep.
Forty-one thousand?
Yeah, and I I believe uh we did it a while ago, but I believe we looked at um invoices that we'd received this year.
Okay.
So we're doing okay this year in transportation, because we've had a full half year of only using fifteen out of seventeen buses. So so we're doing okay.
And I want to be current, the exception, exception is um special education. Those new values are new to the pot. So it's default plus special education. So I'm
It's the default plus the legal requirement. So in FY twenty-two, we voted on thirty-one, five ninety-nine, six seventy-one. So that was our starting point for the FY twenty-three default, and the the difference of three hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand is the legal requirement. So technically, but so it's a different, it is a different number. Okay, I'm I'm looking like, that's not the same number, but.
For the stuff that didn't go, non-special ed and stuff that didn't go to the town, like it like fuel, it's the, it's the slower now.
Yeah, okay.
I hope what people think I was was misleading, man. I wasn't trying to mislead.
And if there was a new category that we had put in there, just yeah, a teacher's lounge with uh an an HDTV or something, if that was new to the budget and we hadn't had it in FY twenty-two, that would not have been able to be funded in FY twenty-three in the default.
That's a one-time expenditure. Yep, yep.
So thanks for that distinction. I promised to whoever's out there, I wasn't trying to mislead. Um because on the last approved budget is the stuff that we have.
I also just made a TV reference, like it's two thousand and three, and that's like a big deal now, when everybody has TVs everywhere now. Um, all right, perfect. Thank you for for that.
Thank you. Uh because I think I, I
So for the contracted position with St. Ace, you said that is new for this budget as well? Okay, I think that is a, that is a valuable tool. I think that is something that it's the first that I remember hearing about this, so it might have come up in curriculum meetings or one of the individual school meetings that I wasn't part of. Um but I think that is a valuable piece for us to um highlight, because it sounds like these are, it's a contracted position. We're basically paying the university for two interns essentially, for lack of a better term.
And it's again, twenty-six hundred hours of fifty thousand, I think I did, it's twenty bucks an hour for, these are certified teachers who are interested in expanding to special ed. So we're getting um very credentialed people. This isn't like my son's student teacher.
Okay.
This is the next stage of this, which is graduate program to become specialist.
So this is in addition to the special ed and excuse me, in addition to the St. Anselm teachers that are currently wrapping up, I believe, their stint at Clark Wilkins.
Yeah, so we still, that's
Those are regular, but they're student teachers.
Correct, that's very, that's very traditional model. We understand that. That's, we get some, they get some. They get some too, but we get lots of services and it's tremendous value. And um there's about four other districts um that are that are participating in this innovation. But truth be told, St. Age likes us.
What are the odds of us being able to, not only the student teachers, sorry Terry, I realize I'm commandeering things, but student teachers and in these graduate program, if this were to pass and become part of the budget, what are the odds of us being able to keep those in-house and, and maintaining a kind of a priority employer status for them? And is that the intent? Okay.
It's direct services. It's also pipeline to a very difficult hiring, special education. We building some infrastructure's capacity for future special education roles is hugely important. I, I looked this weekend. A, a special education openings are everywhere. We still have an opening at Amherst Middle School. If you remember from early exit, we've tried hard. So that's just one example of how hard it is right now. But if we had in-house, we want, I think we're calling fellows to distinguish them between intern, they're fellows. Because it is, it is a higher credential. It's a higher than an intern. I'm not anti-intern, but we're trying to distinguish between the two. So the fellows, it is building a capacity. It really is a win-win and great services, a great value. Yes. And my, cause you want to fit, you're right, Terry. Cause if they don't like that, that's okay. You're right.
So I have a question. Are these new, these fellows that will come in, they're filling new positions? Like we don't currently have these positions.
This is right. This is not some plan. This is additional services for kids.
Okay. So if they come in and they fill these services the next year, what are we looking at? Are we looking to, is, is our ideal that we continue this fellow program with St. Age versus we take these fellows and now we're turning them into full-time employees in those positions rather than a new position that is needed or somebody leaves and we fill?
Exactly. So I envision this to be the working side by side with a special educator and teacher, working with two kids at the same time where most of the time would have been one working with two. So it's that. And so we're expanding our services. But this isn't, we, this isn't, this is additional services, not additional FTE. We would not be, this is a bonus.
Okay.
It's not, and then works out, they get credentialed and we have a special ed opening. And it works, then we'd have a pipeline right in. But this is, this is additional person power versus additional FTE for great value.
And I think it's good to clarify that because I think we saw this when we put the building project on last year and we had X number of additional classrooms. I think everybody's, I think people's minds went to well, that's X number of additional teachers, full-time equivalents. And all of a sudden you have to hire somebody for every single one of those classrooms, which is not necessarily the case. Depending on how you arrange it. And we talked about this during deliberative last year. So it's important to realize that this is extra services. And I assume that is this a contract that we're signing into multiple, multi-year? Or is it just going to be, we have to put this on the budget every year?
Yes, we would put it on the budget every year. And yes, we can't sign the contract until we know we have the.
But I'm saying, is it the first year, it's a one-year contract? And then the next time we're going to try to get a three-year contract and put it on the budget so it rolls over?
Good question. Yeah, we'd have to somehow samrenize it.
We would, yeah.
To, for the default.
But that's not the case this year. This year it's a one-year contract. It's, okay.
And, and to be honest, it's, it's a new program that St. Age is doing. They're padding, they're patterning it after two schools in Massachusetts that have done this successfully. And they have arranged with three other districts in the Hampshire. Program. So part of this is because of Christine and Kathleen and Hannah's strong relationship with St. Age. The student teacher program has worked so successfully that they feel confident that, for example, we're not going to hire a fellow and say, you're doing recess to me all day. You know, that's, we're going to hire a fellow and that means you're subbing for the next week.
Because then you're hiring interns at that point.
Right. That's not, that's, they know they will not, we will not treat, we will provide strong educational experiences for these as they grow into special educators. And opportunity for real experience working with real kids. And that's because of the reputation of Christine and Kathleen and Anna, what we've done over the last few years. So it's a, it's a real opportunity to provide valuable direct services at great, great value.
Anybody else, any other questions? Any other items that we would like to bring up tonight? Well, we have this captive audience here. I know we've done a lot of this during our meetings. We've reviewed the subcommittee meetings. But I certainly want to make sure we're taking advantage of the time to be able to focus strictly on budget tonight.
So we do have one person attending through Zoom.
Okay, well. Yep. We can, we can certainly get to that when we get to the public comment. The co-curricular leadership at the high school, that is only just a matter of shifting, essentially shifting stipends, correct?
Correct. So we will So he can crop this school, they will send us a bill for the services. That we believe that we have priced this as a neutral. We will, we will have program leadership provided by very experienced, very well-credentialed athletic administrators from South Vigan. But there will also be a game director position here to make sure the raps and these things are like that. But we think we have budgeted in a way that is, it's mutual to the.
Okay.
But we create great articulation, great leadership, great value.
Going back to the library assistant, this position does not exist now, or the position is not filled now. We have the position, but we haven't been able to fill it, correct?
No, so that's, that's, that's a good, so we have recently, thank you, I forgot, we converted some recess monitor lunch people to a three-hour block, perhaps the middle of the day. To reallocate some, sir, I think I wrote about that somewhere, talked about that somewhere. So it was a position that was historically in Clark Wilkins. That went away through, through a budget situation. Right, right, mid, mid. I love it.
So when we say it's, it's only the Wilkins Library, I take it that's impacted for this because Clark is going to have its own librarian, correct?
Yes. Wilkins, sorry, I say Clark Wilkins all the time, trying to say that. And Christine and I have talked since last spring about creative ways to, I mean, to staff that position. And the only solutions we had was reducing significant programs somewhere else, making sacrifices other places. So we were very committed to making sure this isn't a budget advocated for strong, because the more time we get kids with books at hand in that library, the better it is.
Our library media specialist teaches thirty-six classes a week. So she has very little time for cataloging, you know, taking care of the collection, doing some of the more administrative type tasks, repairing books and all of that. So not only is she prepping for her thirty-six classes, she's teaching her thirty-six classes. So it's a tough position. We feel that we want the, the library to be a place where students can go and grab books and have the support that they need.
So this assistant position would not be doing any teaching per se, then in those thirty-six classes, that would stay in the purview of the main librarian, but they would just have the other duties, the admin duties would come off the plate then.
Yeah, and they could assist, like if there's a large class or something that the librarian might be doing that special that day, two groups of students, they, they certainly might be jumping in and supporting. Just like our paraprofessionals do, but it's primarily providing that support and assistance. So, you know, checking out books, adding books to the catalog, those types of tasks.
So I know that as we get into January, we'll have presentations on the math curriculum at this point, but do we expect any second year costs for this? I know we had a lot that we spent on professional development to get ready for this year and, and obviously the actual curriculum itself, but are there any unanticipated costs that we're, we're starting to see now for next year? Now that we've actually started to use it?
Yeah, not at the K-five level. There were a few little costs this year that we had budgeted for, a few manipulatives that didn't come with the program that we realized. We needed to provide support to teachers, number racks, the kids build number racks, but then they are built with pipe cleaners and the beads start falling off. So we wanted to buy some number racks that are more permanent, kids need to make them, but to also have them. So little things like that. And we did really try to provide that support to staff. So what is it that you need in implementing this new program? We had funding for that, so we don't anticipate things for next year outside of workbooks. And workbooks are expensive. We did budget fully for workbooks for this year, but we were able to get them at fifty percent off cost for this year. And they will be full price next year. So I did budget fully for those workbooks for next year. But that will be an ongoing cost, you know, for math workbooks as they were previously even with Math and Focus. It was just that Math and Focus stopped making the workbook, so we couldn't buy them anymore in our last year. So that's really our, our big math cost. We will probably do, be, we may be doing some professional development this summer that would likely come a majority or mostly from our grants. So I don't anticipate significant operating budget funds for PD. One piece is the sixth through eighth grade math. So we're really looking deeply at that. We're just starting a process with teachers to begin looking at programs and look at what, what a piloting timeline might look like. So we would probably have some expenses there, which I did budget for.
Thank you.
Just remind me, I know that workbooks, we discussed them in the past and it's cost us more in the long run to make copies rather than just biting the bullet and buying the books.
Yes. And what we did this year, so good question. There are three workbooks for every student, which feels like, or, or three sets of workbooks. There's the home connection workbook. That's the homework book that goes home with students. There is their number corner, which is their calendar math. And then there is their regular workbook. The regular workbook, we know we need no matter what. That's their like daily practice. Number corner is pretty important too. But again, if we threw using the program that first year realized that we're not using too many from number corner and it is more appropriate to photocopy at certain grade levels. We want to have that conversation with teachers. And then the home connections book. We really want to get some feedback from families and from teachers. How often was that book used? Is it a, a helpful resource or not? Certainly, I think in the upper grades, that's going to be a more helpful resource, but was it helpful for our kindergarten, first grade and second grade learners? Since we were able to purchase them at fifty percent off this year, we felt it was really important to purchase the full program, use all of the workbooks and then get feedback from teachers. So it's certainly possible that the feedback we get from teachers, that they say, hey, we don't need this book. We didn't, there, there wasn't a strong need or, you know, we're going to tweak how we're using this book. So we want to have those conversations with teachers. So we won't be purchasing them while we budgeted fully for them. Because as of now, we think we fully need all of them, but as we continue throughout the year and get feedback, we might make some adjustments in purchasing. Nice. Thanks.
Thank you, Christine. Any other comments on the, the math stuff? Next thing I wanted to bring up, Steve, was when we had our Ways and Means Subcommittee meetings with the Ways and Means members, but with board liaisons in there as well to look at the individual budget areas. We saw Roger's spreadsheet. It's not even fair to call it that. It was almost an Adam Steele level spreadsheet at that point. With his five-year plan across every building, across every budget line item sinking back and forth. So my question, I know you mentioned doing this for technology, but is this an area that would be good to develop across other places in the district? And maybe it exists now, we've just not seen that. But to the extent that Roger had it, I have not seen that. But I wonder if it's something that we need to start looking into. So we can know those five-year plans. We know in five years, if we have to get a new curriculum, we can start to to plan that and be able to move those around, not only for budget creation, but just for long-term costing.
Absolutely. And Amy can speak to it. This is one of her drive, drivers that she's trying to do as much planning, as much forecasting. I mean, you can speak to it.
Oh yeah, that's really it. Just, I mean, the more we can develop plans and project, the better our, our yearly budgets are going to be as well. So I have worked with Brian and he's committed to providing a tech budget for the districts. I agree. I think the other major areas and talking to Christine, looking at curriculum. And, you know, that touches a lot of areas as well. So yes, our, our staffing and benefits are the, the biggest areas, but if we can and, and truthfully Roger includes that in his, in his forecasting as well. So if we can look at staffing as well as breaking out those major areas and do some five-year planning. I think we will, it will help us to, to be more fiscally conservative, but also be able to understand how we can smooth out some, some large costs.
Next, next time, we'll be taking a look at revenue.
And next meeting, you mean?
Yep, next meeting.
Thank you.
And one of the, I mean, it all depends on, on the community, but the, the community that I came from, they told the board and they told the administration that they were very interested in stabilizing tax rates, not peaks and valleys. They could plan, they could budget, they could save. And as such, they took advantage of the state statute in creating a tax rate stabilization fund. That the district can hold five percent of a, a component of their budget four times if you are short in revenue. And also if you're high in revenue, you can put revenue away. And so the community's value that I came from was stabilized. We, Steve, anything we, yeah, some years if we go, you get a lot back, but next year we know we're going to be a lot. That wasn't predictable for them. And it was, it's a vote by the elected body. They vote to fund it and vote to put funds in it. So it is at the will of the people. But just the other day, Amy, Roger and I were at a place, and I don't remember what it was. But we said, oh, that should be in the CNA. And Roger, I think, put it in the CNA. So we will continually develop that and look for long-term. We've heard that from Ways and Means. We've heard it from the community. The more we can project, plan and stabilize the expenses and stabilize a revenue in a more predictable fashion, I think it just builds the credibility and trust and just predictability of what we're doing, which people tend to like.
That's a really important piece of the facility work that we did back in the twenty nineteen Facility Summit. That was a big piece of it, talking about the importance of looking at Roger's CNA. And we understand that one year, you know, if you look at a graph, we've got the peaks and the valleys. And instead to be able to save through the CRF and to think about long-term so that we know that we can keep more of a, of a level base for the tax residents, taxpayers.
And we may, I mean, we'll take a look at revenue, but if there, so what happens in revenue is if some years you give back eight hundred thousand dollars in reserve fund balance. If the next year you're short and you only give back four hundred thousand, your tax rate went up four hundred thousand dollars before you start a budget. Didn't do anything wrong. And some community says, geez, if we can just level it up, put that money away. That was where I came from. And the communities in central New Hampshire took advantage. It's something that the town, like Amy and I met with, with the town. And they have six million dollars in reserves. They dropped a lower tax rate this year, a million dollars. So they said, we're going to give a million dollars back to the town and still have six. I think it was six. Sometimes I embellish. But I think I'm pretty close. And so the notion that there's six million dollars in it, so, which is great for the community because they, they're used to this. They understand this. That the town has six million dollars and then this year they were short in revenue, they dropped a million. And that reduced the taxes by whatever, by a million. They could have done two, but they make, remember every year you do two. If you don't match it, you impact the tax rate. Right? Cause it's all about the delta in revenue. And so Amy and I spent a lot of time on revenue and we'll talk about that, the Amherst world next week.
Okay. Any other outstanding budget questions, budget items? Dwayne, anything from a Ways and Means perspective tonight? Okay. Your next meeting is Monday night, the twelfth, correct? Six o'clock for school? Thank you. So before we wrap up for tonight, I want to move into one, one other thing in terms of warrant articles. The list that we can expect to, to put on this year, because we're going to review them in the next meeting. We have to vote in the next meeting to put them on for January, correct? They have to be approved by January third, fourth, something like that.
Yeah, you do have a budget. I mean, you have a public hearing prep meeting, so you could always defer and vote then, but it would be great. Once you vote, then I'm going to submit them to Department of Revenue and just get approval for those.
There, there's at least one that we, we likely won't have, and that's potential AEA contract for next year. So we know we're really just going to have one that we'll have to do Jan-, January third.
I'll probably just submit, you know, blank numbers and get approval for it. Yeah.
Okay. So right now the budget, CRF deposit, if you will, from the unassigned fund balance, the school project for Clark Wilkins. Two contracts. I feel like I'm missing something as well. Trailer articles, yep, for each contract.
Yep. Capital reserve, trailer articles, AEA, ASSA, budget and bond.
Okay.
Meg, Amy and I reviewed the contribution to the Special Education Trust and we're comfortable. It's about three hundred and fifty, so we're comfortable.
Well, I'd say, because we thought we were going to have to dip into that last year and did not, correct?
So you're in good shape.
Yep. So we're still at three fifty.
Yep.
Was it three or three fifty?
I thought close to three fifty, but don't.
May, may have been over three hundred with interest and everything, but I thought it was.
I'm ish.
As long as we're above three, we're fine. Correct, yeah. Alright, so with that, any, any last items from the board? Um, all right. So with that, any, any last items from the board? Uh, yeah, we, we will have a non-meeting tonight to update. Um, I will say that we're looking at the agenda for next week. If you have any items that you'd like to get on there, I don't know if, has everybody seen the agenda on Trello?
It's a number.
Okay. If you want to review that and then we can, we can add any items after the fact, we can get those, um, get those on there, but um, other than that, I think we are good for our second public comment of the night. If there's our, any viewers?
Nothing, no, no hands raised.
Okay, no hands raised. Uh, if you are online tonight and would like to raise your hand and speak in a non-public, you'll have three minutes. We'll give it a couple of seconds for that. Uh, but otherwise, we will
Three ten's the number.
Three ten, perfect. Uh, so otherwise we will have a non-meeting tonight. Um, we've given it a moment, nobody online to speak. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight. Motion, motion from Jason, getting a second. Josh has a second, all in favor. Five to nothing. We are officially adjourned tonight. We will move into a non-meeting. Thank you everybody for coming and we will meet again next Thursday.